Good morning, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. And with that, we will begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll join me in that. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Fledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
(Inaudible) to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems like it's been awhile since we have been here with the five Tuesdays in January and our first Tuesday coming six days into the month here, but want to welcome everybody to your regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. Tonight, we do have an agenda with quite a few items on it, a couple of change use permits. We're going to look at that, we're going to look at a zone change, some de-annexation, we'll look at a purchase agreement for tasers, need to look at appointments to our PBC in agreement with the YMCA, and we could some flood insurance, and we also have voting delegates to the WAMPA Board are all on our agenda this evening. The first thing to come before council however is the consent agenda which has four items listed in it. This contains the minutes of the January 16th meeting as well as the number of community activities coming up. May 5th is shredding and e-recycling day that takes place from 8:00 AM to noon. Waste Connection provides the shredder, this is at no charge to us, and they also bring out e-recyclers as well with no charge. So mark your calendars for that, May 5th. Then June 21st through the 24th, these are citywide garage sale days which does not conflict with other area dates, and the council typically waives permit fees during those dates so that bring people in for yard sales into Bel Air. Then lastly, July 14th and October 6th are set aside as the curbside cleanup days, and again, that's at no charge by Waste Connection. So you can set your calendars and schedules when you're doing home remodeling projects and that type of stuff. So are there any other comments or questions on the consent agenda and the four items listed there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last year, they didn't bring a sh-shredding machine, are they? Is somebody going to check with them to make sure that they're going to have one here this year because we had a lot of residents that were upset.
Yeah, that was the concern that we heard actually after last year, and we got ahold of Waste Connections and told them that we really wanted this actual shredding truck, and they said we would have it.
Okay.
So, may I remember that discussion? A lot of people show up for that, I would encourage all of our citizens to do that. There are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second.
First and second. Further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Item seven is we'll move into discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance, 2018-03, total amount is $477,052.77. And again, would remind anybody listening at home that's interested from the audience, we do always have our appropriations ordinance online, you can see where every penny is going. Do you need a motion to approve the appropriations ordinance this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the appropriations ordinance 18-03.
I'll second.
Let me give that to Councilman Hawes, he's got the last one, we'll do that, the draw. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. City requested appearances. Lieutenant Fox is here to make a special presentation. This is something that's really neat, I don't want to say exactly what it is because I want you to say what happened for that.
I'm going to introduce Zachary Haney. Zachary works for Mice Construction. On January 5th, 2018, well, he was working at his job site over in the New Rock Springs Zachary, I understand from talking with him that day, because I actually responded to this call, they were traveling to the job site, is that correct?
We were actually moving the location of the job site, we finished up on one end and was moving to another.
Okay. And what happened was I got dispatched to a vicious dog call, and the call text was pretty vague, it was dogs barking, people were upset the dogs were barking, but then they heard a woman screaming at the same time. At the time, I didn't know Zachary was there. I get there, and as I'm walking up, I see a lady on her back deck from the street, and she's appears to be in shock, she's covered in blood, and talking with her, she had several pit bulls, and two pit bulls had started fighting while she had just gotten out of the shower, so she was in a bathrobe. She had run out to break up the dog fight, and in the meantime, got attacked herself by her dogs. Mr. Haney observed this, owning a pit bull himself, he understands some of the nature of the dog. He actually jumped the wrought iron fence with a shovel and commenced to separating the dogs off her. At the time, he wasn't aware how severe her injuries were. She was taken to the hospital in pretty serious condition. She, by the time I got there, she had the shock had already started to set in, and after talking with him and his superintendent, and talking with the victim and her husband, they were very grateful that Mr. Haney jumped the fence, you know, not even being asked, just did it. So with that being said, we felt that it was necessary to recognize him for putting himself in danger to save a citizen of Bel Air, him not being a citizen of Bel Air himself actually doing work. We felt that he needed to be recognized. So tonight, what we'd like to do is recognize Mr. Haney with the Bel Air Bronze Medal of Merit for life-saving. After speaking with the victim and her husband, they felt he did save her life, that the dogs wouldn't have stopped. Mr. Haney, on behalf of the Bel Air Police Department, the City of Bel Air, we want to present you with the Bronze Medal of Merit for life-saving award.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I just got to thank you on behalf of the City Council for doing that. Never know when we're going to be put in that situation, and I've heard the story before, but you saw it, you saw someone needed help, and you even hesitated, so.
Please, sir.
All right. We welcome you to our city anytime, and we have homes for sale, so.
That's why I'd be wanting to help him build.
Yeah. Thank you. It's always great to see good people who answer the call when they're called, so again, thank you for that. A lot of you may notice that a great number of our police force are here behind us, some are on duty, so, and some have already worked a full shift today, and some are coming on tonight, but this is a majority of our police department here, and the reason why they're here is because we wanted to present something. Lieutenant, if you can come back up here, we want an official plaque that you can hang in the department, or we can hang out in our foyer, recognizing, we talked quite a bit about this, but Bel Air was named the safest city in the entire state of Kansas, and I think we owe a lot of that to the constant presence. I think we owe a lot of that to our police department being community citizens and knowing our citizens, and knowing our town, and being active and involved. We see it at events, except Lieutenant keeps losing weight, but other than that, we, but see everybody here and fill in while Chief is away getting another training, but we want to, the city wants to present this to the Bel Air Police Department, safest city in Kansas, in appreciation of your dedication and valuable service to the citizens of Bel Air, and it has all the different names on it, and I'll go through that if we want to, but Chief Adevere, Lieutenant Fox, Detective Davis, Officer Steele, Officer Kreis, Officer Davis, Roney, and Trumble, Kraus, Foreman, Gibson, Webb, and we also want to recognize our municipal court clerk, Lindsey, who's here, so, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right.
And to add to that, the city manager and the chief and I have discussed, and the plaque is great for the department, we want to recognize each individual officer tonight, so I'd take a few minutes to do that, plus with a new council, it'd give you guys kind of an idea and a familiar face. Now, like the mayor said, not all of them are here, some of them work nights, we did have one of our third shifters make it in, but all of our second shifters are here, all the one first shift, two first shifters are here, and the chief is obviously gone, and our part timers had his full-time job tonight. So real quickly, because that's one that's going to make it even go faster, I guess. Officer Kreis. Officer Kreis is our school resource officer for the, for all the schools within Bel Air, and we want to recognize her. We want to recognize her for the safest city award, and with these certificates, each officer is getting a ribbon to wear on their uniform as a representation of the award.
Thank you.
Officer Roney. Officer Roney is one of our second shift patrol officers, you'll see him a lot at the community events. He's a second shift patrol officer as well. Officer Trumble. Officer Trumble's a second shift patrol officer, actually Officer Trumble is going to be recognized not only for the city, safest city award, but we also want to recognize him for his service in the United States military. Officer Trumble did how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty years in the United States Air Force and retired, lived in Florida for awhile and decided to come work for the City of Bel Air, so we stole him from Florida. Detective Davis. Detective Davis is first shift, obviously by the title, is our detective. Municipal Court Clerk Lindsey Nygaard. Lindsey does dual duty, she's also our police clerk, so she not only manages the municipal court files, but she also manages the police day-to-day files and reports. Officer Toomey is our part-time officer, he's not here tonight, he works full-time for the VA Police Department. Officer Aaron Kraus, he's one of our third shift officers. And then Officer Foreman, who's not here, he's also a third shift officer, he's actually running late, he may show up before too long, I'm not sure, but. Then Officer Davis, who is attending a school function tonight, so, and then Officer Steele, who couldn't be here as well. So that's your police department, and the chief, so he's in Virginia.
I was going to thank you, and I want to, again, we want to thank our Bel Air Police Department. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the, is open for citizens' concerns, if there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council this evening, now would be a time to come and do that. Seeing none, we will move on to reports, we're going to start with council members, and we will start with Councilmember Hawes.
I have no formal report.
No report tonight.
No report.
I have no report.
I have no report.
All righty. And I have no formal report as well, I do want to just let everybody know, it was an honor, golly, going back two and a half, three weeks now, we had members, seniors from Sunrise Christian Academy that came out here and did their mock council, and they filled this room, we had to bring extra chairs in, and they actually go through an election, elect council, and elect a mayor, and go through a full agenda, and it was really, I really appreciated the fact, just seeing, I was honored, I got to welcome them, and they asked questions, they were involved, they were engaged, they knew about the process that goes on up here, and that was just really something to see high school seniors take that much of an interest in city government and wanting to participate in that. And then the very next day, I, the Friday, I got to do a welcome for our regional mayor's summit, where we had mayors, the REAP put that on, and mayors, including Mayor Longwell from the City of Wichita, and others, working together and had a nice conversation about some economic opportunities, and they all commented how much they love coming to Bel Air, they love our building and facility, and our room is just the right size, so I bet we see them back. But with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The League of Municipalities let me know that they are assisting on some legislation. Senate Bill 325 would have newly elected officials take their seat immediately after the canvassing is over, the final canvassing, which would cause newly elected officials to take office, the meeting right, the second meeting in November in our city. So that's something they're getting feedback on right now, if any of you have any feedback, please email me. I know that Bel Air, that prior to the, to the change, newly elected officials took their seat in the second January meeting, which would have, it's going to be just like that, except it would be in November, so it's more like, it'll be more the way that it was, instead of having that to the December meetings where the old council was still in seat, but they're, you know, transitioning out, so if you have any feedback on that, please let me know, that's all I have.
So basically, we'll not have the lame duck type?
Exactly.
Say the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just notified last week from the Wichita Business Journal that our Director of Administration and Finance, Ted Henry, was selected as one of the top 21 CFOs in 2018 by the Wichita Business Journal, so was pretty proud of that, that one of our staff members is recognized through the Wichita Business Journal. They take nominations every year, and then they have a review board that selects those, they look at not just government, but there's mostly, obviously, are business CFOs, but they do include one or two government people, one or two nonprofits, but the majority are business CFOs, so, and there'll be more information coming out, though, they have a paper that's dedicated to them, and so I'll be sharing that as we get more information, but, thank you, Mayor.
With that, if there's any boards or committees which to address? We'd like to just let council know that we are getting a few of the one-page applications, I guess, if you will, for our Community Development Committee, and we'll get all those out to you in email, hopefully later this week, or in advance of our next meeting, so we can vote on that, and preparation to get ready for the Spring Festival, that'll be here before we know it, so. With that, let's move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. First thing is a conditional use permit, the owner at 4155 North Fattin has requested the CUP to allow him to operate a home-based business. Appointments only are made to visit the business, they did go through all the right channels, which included giving proper notification to surrounding neighbors, there also was a public hearing that was held at the meeting on January 11th, Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission, upon talking with the homeowner and having the, the public meeting, did vote unanimously four to zero to approve it, to approve the conditional use permit, and so final approval is now before City Council this evening. Questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance brooding the conditional use on certain properties owned R1 located within the corporate city limits of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? Since it is an ordinance, does call for a roll call vote. Jim Benage?
Yay.
Jeff Helsof?
Yay.
Jeff Hawes?
Yay.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
And I myself vote aye. So, CUP is approved. Always exciting to see entrepreneurs and home-based businesses that, moving on to item B is consideration of an ordinance changing the zoning classification from C1 to C2. This is the lot over at 4720 North Oliver, has a commercial building on it with a C1 commercial zone, that's commercial. The new owner would like to store a trailer and supplies outside of the building, however, that requires a zoning change to C2, kind of like what we just discussed before, they to have these changes, notification was given to neighboring properties, a public hearing was held at that January 11th Planning Commission meeting as well. The Planning Commission did have a few stipulations which are included in the ordinance, I think you saw the minutes in your packet there as well, but do you want to point out that they did have a couple of things they wanted to see in there, and that is included in the ordinance? And then after that, the zone change was approved unanimously as well, so just like CUP ordinance, final approval is now before the governing body.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning of classification from C1 to C2 with a PUD overlay on certain property located within the corporate city limits of Bel Air, Cedric County, Kansas, and authorize mayor to sign.
Second.
At first and second, are there any questions or comments? Again, with an ordinance, does call for a roll call vote. Jim Benage?
Aye.
Jeff Helsof?
Aye.
Jeff Hawes?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative. Item C is another conditional use permit, we're talking, moving on to the Catholic Care Complex. Catholic Diocese of Wichita owns and operates the Catholic Care Center, they have requested a CUP to construct several individual cabins, so they're doing some expansion over there. Each building will have a restroom, kitchen, and a bedroom, so kind of equivalent one-bedroom apartment. Property notification was given to all the surrounding neighbors, they also had a public hearing at the January 11th Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission, after hearing everything, voted unanimously to approve the conditional use permit as well. And now that is before council for approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to ask the attorney, do I need to abstain from this? I don't have any dealings with the Catholic Care Center, but I am a Catholic.
No, you do not need to abstain.
Thank you.
Would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a conditional use on certain property, Zoned R6 located within the corporate city limits of Bel Air, of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? Roll call vote. Jim Benage?
Aye.
Jeff Helsof?
Aye.
Jeff Hawes?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative. And another ordinance, this one is a de-annexation, the actual intersection, this is one that we've talked about, we talked about it at, oh, for quite awhile actually, including at our workshop, but the actual intersection of 37th and Woodlon, half of it is owned by the City of Wichita, and half is owned by the City of Bel Air. This makes maintenance and traffic enforcement pretty difficult, as you might imagine, depending on which side of the street you are on when you've got two cities that are involved. Wichita has agreed to annex the entire street portion of the intersection, requiring Bel Air to de-annex our part, so only the street is being removed. Just want to make sure you can see that in your packet, just so everybody knows, only the street is being removed. Then Bel Air will maintain the easement on the northwest corner for our utilities, so we maintain control there. Wichita city limits includes all of the corners except for the northwest corner, and that is Bel Air. So the Planning Commission, this, we're going back to December 14th, is when the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this, and they approved the de-annexation with unanimous 5-0 vote. So, I do want to see if there are any questions, or city attorney or city manager would certainly answer those, or have anything else to add.
Only thing I would add is that that public hearing was held at their January meeting.
Was it the January one?
Yeah, it was scheduled for December, but it needed to be moved, that's just going to help you know that the notice period is longer.
How far north of the intersection does that de-annexation include?
Just on the roadway, so it's just that, the street portion of that intersection, if you can imagine. I can't give you mileage, just along that street, so it's like a square within the street.
I guess I'm not understanding that fully, okay?
So I think the street is going to be, it's kind of like, the intersection itself is a square, and then you have roads feeding into that square, and so basically, it's that square, it doesn't go farther, like 100 feet or 300 feet or anything like that, it's just that square portion of where the, all the roads come into it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So it's the paved portion only? So it's the paved portion only?
Paved portion only.
So this, this, uh, layout that was in the packet, on exhibit B, shows a seventy-five foot. Is that, is that what the amount is that we're de-annexing from the, from the?
From the center.
From the center of the intersection?
Yeah.
And again, it's just the street only mainly for maintenance.
Right.
I mean, I can imagine trying to coordinate two different municipalities, actually three, because you got the county involved as well, some of them too.
Yeah.
And then for law enforcement, so will Bel Air still be able to, you know, does that mean, we're not giving up any law jurisdiction, are we?
My understanding is we have southbound lanes to the intersection, eastbound lanes to the intersection, and then everything west. So my understanding, then, Jackie, you might correct, and I'm on, everything to the sidewalk south and west of the intersection, is that correct?
South and west.
Going back towards Dillons.
Right, towards Dillons. So, but law enforcement, and typically where an accident starts, uh, that's, that governs who comes in and assists with the accident. Bel Air would continue to assist, but here, if an accident started in the intersection and stopped in the intersection, Wichita would take over that.
Now, anything north of that north box of the intersection, the northbound lanes all the way to the railroad tracks are actually in the Kechipane Township, and the maintenance and the traffic enforcement and accidents actually occurs within Cedric County, and it's responsibility of the sheriff's office, county maintenance, to maintain that small stretch of road to the easement, to the east, and then beyond that is Wichita.
Any other questions or comments? If not, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion to approve an ordinance approving the petition for de-annexation of a portion of the intersection of 37th and Woodlawn made by the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments before I call the roll call? Hearing none. Jim Benage?
Aye.
Jeff Helssoff?
Aye.
Jeff Hawes?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative. And item E, uh, is consideration of a quote from Axon, Axon Enterprise, looking at purchasing ten tasers for use by the Bel Air Police Department. Um, this is a, uh, Bel Air Police Department utilizes these tasers as a non-lethal way to gain compliance in difficult situations. As of right now, we only have, I don't know if you want to make all this public, but we actually only have four remaining tasers that are operational, but, and those four are completely out of warranty and are non-serviceable. Uh, the police department would like to purchase new tasers, and Axion has a special, if we purchase a minimum of ten. Some of you may recall, this is one of those things where we had an opportunity a few months ago, uh, would have saved, uh, uh, saved some money. Unfortunately, that offer has expired, but they do have another one, but does require a few more. And Ted, do you want to speak any more on this?
Uh, I think we put everything as detailed as we possibly could. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have, uh, in reference to this.
Are we intending to continue use of the existing tasers as well, or keep them in service as long as they're?
Yes, yes. We originally, seven, eight, nine years ago, uh, we purchased six tasers. Uh, since that time, warranties have expired. Taser will no longer service those. Uh, they no longer make the batteries for those. So the taser is offering, and we're down to four, two are completely out of service, uh, and you're, you're talking about four tasers to share amongst fourteen officers. What Taser, uh, has offered to do is buy those from us, all six, however, we keep those. And the four that are still working properly, we use until they no longer are working properly. So at that would give us a total of fourteen tasers to use amongst all the full-time officers, to include the chief and myself.
Thank you. And you see, you know, where we have the report that talks quite a bit about this, and, um, and, I mean, these, I mean, with the warranty and service agreement, this is all included in this contract, and I appreciate seeing this. I know, um, um, and, you know, they have these special purchase agreements that, uh, so small departments with limited budgets to spread the cost of the purchase, um, over a five-year timeframe, and that's, uh, nothing that's very attractive to this. I know, um, the police department had budgeted for the replacement in 2017, as I mentioned earlier, and I know to replace those units individually, the cost for eight at that time, uh, that would include the holsters, batteries, warranty, all that, would have been close to eleven thousand dollars. So, um, we had the saving there, seven hundred and thirty per, so, um, this agreement is still a good one, maybe not as good as that one, but it's still a pretty doggone good one.
Actually, myself and the city manager discussed this. This is actually a better agreement.
It is a better one, okay.
It, it is. It looks like, uh, a large sum of money up, that we will have to come up with, but if you look at the, uh, breakdown that Ted Henry did, per taser, per year, if we were to have to purchase two cartridges every year per taser, that's just because they have an expiration date. Um, and two batteries per taser every year, because that's what we average per taser is, the use of two batteries. We're actually saving, I would have to look at, I did print it, so, um, with Ted's numbers and what we come up with, we're actually saving the city four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with this contract, uh, through that taser's offering, because they actually offer unlimited cartridges for the full five years. So if
Survive.
In thirty days, I needed to replace twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty, and I call them, they ship them free of charge. Same thing with the batteries. Each device is also covered for five years under their warranty, and, and the way they're running their warranty is that we've learned is, it's not a fixed warranty, it's a replacement warranty. They will just send us a brand-new device, and at the end of that five years, they will buy those back, and we will be able to upgrade their new technology at even a cheaper price.
Appreciate, and I'll just go ahead and recap here. The contract has, you know, the, the buyback for the six outdated tasers, uh, ten new ones, ten memory units, like you said, with batteries, all that, ten holsters. Um, then, of course, you mentioned the unlimited cartridges and unlimited batteries, uh, thirty simulation cartridges for training, I think that's important to point out too, and then, of course, the five-year warranties you, um, uh, mentioned, and then what's really neat about it is the Bel Air Police Department gets to keep the outdated devices, uh, for use until they're no longer usable too.
Correct.
So, yeah, I know, I know, because, yeah, that, that number jumped out at me, the nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty, but that makes sense now with five years and buying more and...
It, it does, and unfortunately, Taser, uh, when I called them, when this was brought back up, um, their policy changed that it has to be a minimum of ten to fall under that, that specific contract. Uh, the price would almost double if we were to order eight individually. Uh, so you're, you're looking at, uh, almost forty thousand dollars if we were to purchase them individually, not on this contract. It does require us to purchase two more, but that's their minimum number required.
Again, fourteen officers having to...
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What is the difference between the unlimited contract and the regular contract?
The, uh, the regular contract does not include the unlimited cartridges, the unlimited batteries for the term of the five years. With that, we would have to purchase, every time a battery would need to be replaced, you're looking at between sixty and seventy dollars per battery, every time it need to be replaced. You're looking at thirty-five dollars per cartridge if we had to, as we replace cartridges. Uh, with the unlimited, for five years, we can order five thousand cartridges, five thousand batteries at any given time, and they don't charge us any additional money.
But our agenda says nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty, and for the un, uh, the regular one, it's twenty-three-nine.
That's why the unlimited is a better option, and you actually get more out of it. Like I said, if, with the, with the basic, we can order those eight. That's why I said the price would almost double.
Thank you.
And, yeah, with the budget, just so everybody is aware, and those at home too, so we're looking at, correct me if I'm wrong here, if you wouldn't, you know, year one's gonna be thirty-three fifty, year two, thirty-nine fifty, thirty-nine fifty, thirty-nine fifty, for five years, giving us that option to spread it out, which
And that's the
Makes it a lot nicer, actually.
Correct, and that's the minimum payment required. Um, I know there was a question that was brought up, that if we pay it all upfront, or if we pay half this year, half next year, is there a penalty? No. Uh, if we pay it all upfront, or however we pay it off, as long as we make that minimum payment, there's no interest, there's no penalty for paying it off early as well.
Is there any type of a discount if we pay it all upfront?
That, you're, you just saw based on the other contract, so no, there's not.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, the best part is there's no penalty for paying it off early and no interest.
Is this a nineteen thousand dollar figure net of the rebate for the six tasers?
Yes, that's all figured into that total price.
Mr. Mayor? Question for the city manager. Since we did not expend the, the ten thousand dollars last year, do we still have, um, remaining funds in the budget for this purchase this year for the three thousand dollars?
Um, yeah, it was basically that money that was set aside, just carried over into this year, so those, that ten thousand or twelve thousand, whatever it was, is, is in the budget, um, in our cash for that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have another question for the city administrator. If something should happen and, uh, somebody gets deceased from this, do we have enough insurance to cover the city?
Yeah, there's, uh, there's two pieces to that. One is there's a Kansas Tort Claim Act, which covers cities, that says we cannot be liable for anything more than, what's it, half a million, five hundred thousand?
I think it's five hundred thousand.
Something like, so, so there's a limit, a cap that we can be sued for. And then secondly, um, when we buy insurance, property casualty insurance, it covers, uh, those types of things, something like this, if, um, you know, someone was, um, ran over with a mower, um, it covers that, any kind of accidents, whether it be for our own staff or for citizens.
Because that one case in Wichita is still pending with the family, where that they were shot, the eighty-five-year-old man with the taser and passed away, and they're still, I guess, hassling that.
Yeah. So what, what, what happens is if we, if someone sues the city for whatever it, it is, then we automatically turn it over to insurance company, and then they have actual litigators that work for, um, EMC, which is a national company, and they represent us.
And all this, uh, nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty is in their budget?
Uh, it's in the capital equipment budget, so it's not in the police budget.
So you said he carried it over in the police department?
No, it was, it was budgeted in the capital equipment fund, and it just stayed in there.
Oh.
So
So that nineteen thousand is covered?
Yes.
But you're only gonna pay like three thousand each year for five years?
Yeah, and that's what internally we were talking about, is, you know, do we really want to pay the, since there's no interest or anything, do we really want to pay it off? And, you know, maybe we pay ten thousand or five thousand or something, but, um, there's no benefit of paying it off early, so that's what we're gonna look at.
Whatever the smartest cash management thing is to do it.
That's why I asked, if there was a benefit paying it off early, I'd do that, but otherwise it's...
Well, if you pay it off and something happens to them, then they won't fix it.
So, it's covered under, for five years.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one more question for Lieutenant Fox, and I know I asked you this question by email, but I'm gonna ask it just for everyone else's benefit. Did we look at any, um, competitors of the Axon taser and get any additional price splits from other vendors?
Yeah, we, we looked at the other providers of a less lethal electronic weapon. Um, there is a company called Phaser. Um, they were just recently brought up in a civil suit through Taser and lost, and was in the process of going out of business. Um, they are a lot cheaper, but they don't stand behind their product. There's a lot of civil litigation with them. Um, in fact, I emailed the city manager, and I believe he forwarded you a link to that so, that suit, um, as well. Um, so yes, we did. Right now, Taser is the only one out there that law enforcement nationwide, actually across the entire world, is using. That's why they're an international corporation. They do stand behind their product. They actually, uh, to go with Ms. Martin, um, they actually have a very large legal staff that if, if that, something was to happen, they will actually get with, uh, Jackie and, uh, EMC, and their legal team will help represent and investigate to, to ensure that the device did not cause the overall, um, fa, fatal situation if that was to occur.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Do these shoot those string things out, or prongs, whatever they, I don't know what they are, but they, are they just the electronic?
They're actually probes.
Probes.
They're, they're very, very small. Um, they're, they're not even a half inch long. They're, I would give them about a quarter inch. Uh, they are barbless. Uh, they look similar to a fish hook without the bar, but they're straight. Um, so they go in and they pop out very, very easily. Um, and that's what it is, and then they are connected with a very fine line cable.
That's a great discussion. Any other questions or comments? Not entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of ten tasers for the Bel Air Police Department from Axon at a cost of nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item F, moving on, is review of the twenty seventeen, uh, community rating system. This is for national flood insurance. Bel Air does have a few properties that are actually considered to be located in a flood plain, and, and so as a result, um, takes action to mediate and educate, which is compiled in an annual report. That's, uh, what's in this report that we have to have. In creating a report and being part of the national flood insurance program, those property owners who are affected by flood, uh, plans and being in the flood plain, they get a reduced rate on flood insurance. So we do this for those homeowners, again, like I said, you know, if they ever need to mediate, you know, with the education, and by us having this, they are able to get a reduced rate on the flood insurance. So the only action is to receive and file, uh, not anything we have to pay for, not just, uh, just have to receive the official, um, uh, rating.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Is there any property that the city owns with, with say, a building on it that is actually in the flood plain? That, that the city itself has to pay for additional flood insurance on?
Uh, no. Um, now, we do own some land that has flood plain on it, but there's no structures that we own that are in the flood plain.
Related to that, what's, what's the nature of that property that we deal on? Is it like residential lots or?
No, it's, um, agriculture, so, and what will happen is, is that, as that's sold and developed, then the, uh, the developer plats, um, certain, um, either amenities around that, and then leaves it as a reserve, or they'll, um, install drainage ways and retention ponds, and then take areas out of the flood plain in doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, uh, motion to receive and file the city of Bel Air Community Rating System Report for twenty seventeen.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, next is consideration of an agreement with the Wichita YMCA. Uh, the Wichita YMCA is operated in day camp. They use the Bel Air Rec Center. They've done this since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, YMCA actually provided all the staffing and equipment, supplies, and they manage the program. It's just simply, it's a YMCA program that's held on Bel Air property. So basically, they are just renting a room at the rec center when it's not being used for a Bel Air program. And what's neat about this is by them renting that room, they pay the rent, rent in the amount of seven thousand dollars that comes directly to the city then. It's been a great, uh, partnership for both, uh, our city and for the YMCA. Um, I know they, like I said, it's been going on for a number of years now, and they're happy with it, and we're, and I talked with Brian earlier this week, and he certainly is happy with, uh, having it come back again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion to approve the summer day camp agreement with the Wichita YMCA and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, item H is a, uh, WAMPO voting delegate. Federal transportation funds are distributed to the Wichita area Metropolitan Planning Organization for Distribution. Bel Air, uh, we're a member of, um, WAMPO and has a voting delegate as well as an alternate voting delegate. Our city engineer, Anne Stevens, has been the voting delegate for the last five years, and we're in need of an alternate. Spoke a couple of weeks ago, actually, with Councilmember Benage, who stated he would like to serve as an alternate, where Anne would, like I said, stay on, um, but Jim could be, Councilmember Benage could be the alternate. So is there a motion to appoint him?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Jim Benage as the alternate voting delegate to the WAMPO governing board.
Second. Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor? You do know that it has to be a council member that, on WAMPO, that they do the voting. I don't think Ann can vote, can she?
Yes, she can, because we appointed her.
She's not a council member.
Doesn't matter for WAMPO.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jackie, just a question for you. Is it appropriate for me to vote on this, or, or not?
Sure. Good question. I think you vote for yourself.
You can vote, there's no...
All right. I didn't think of the conflict issue, but I wanted to just check with you to make sure.
Thanks.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item I, our final item this evening, is the Bel Air PVC appointment. Our Public Building Commission owns and manages all of the industrial land in the Sunflower Commerce Park. The PVC bylaws say that we have to establish a third-person board consisting of the mayor, at least one council member, and a citizen can take the place of one council member. So currently, we have myself and one citizen who are on there, so therefore, we need to have a council member that needs to be appointed. Do you want to ask if there's anyone willing to take a seat on the PVC?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
When does that committee meet?
When it's needed, and the meetings are pretty short, so...
Yeah, I think last year, we met maybe two or three times. It's, it's if someone's purchasing land in the industrial park, then the PVC has to approve that, as well as the city council. Typically, what we've done is meet like prior to a council meeting, so maybe six-thirty PM, takes fifteen minutes or so, that's usually when we schedule those.
Mr. Mayor, I'll fill us up for that.
All right. Someone like to make a motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I make a motion to appoint Jeff Hawes to the Bel Air Public Building Commission, who lost my place.
There a second?
A second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next discussion of future issues to come before council, we do have a workshop scheduled on February thirteenth at six-thirty. Wanted to ask two different things, if, I know there's a number of things. We should probably have a workshop, if not February, at least in March, I think we need to have one fairly soon, to look at our master plan, to look at, well, engineering for the Woodlong project, just a couple of things that come to mind, that I think we should have a workshop on. Do you need to let council know, I'm actually out of town on February the thirteenth, so I would ask if there's another date that works, if you want to have one in February, or if we, if no set, it's not set in stone, we have to have one, but, like I said, I'd like to have one, I think sometime in the next, in the near future, but I would ask, again, if there's, if there's another date that, other than February thirteenth, that we can make work for everyone, I would appreciate that knowing that I'm going to be out of town, but February thirteenth is when you guys want one, and it works for everybody, I understand, it's five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Are you out of town only on the thirteenth of that week?
Only on the thirteenth of that week, yeah.
Would the twelfth work for anyone?
That's the Monday, correct?
The Monday before?
It works for me.
Monday would not work for me in February, I'm, I'm doing a homeless project, entire month.
I would not recommend Valentine's Day, like everybody up here, but...
So you're gone the whole week of that mo, that week?
No, I'm, just the Mondays, I'm, I'm tied up on Monday.
Oh, on Monday, okay.
Well, I'm not tied up the entire day, but I'm tied up in the evening, so...
What about the next week?
So, yeah, we could look at Thursday the fifteenth, or...
The fifteenth is actually a CDC meeting.
Let's not do that, then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
What about immediately before or after the council meeting on the twentieth, if we extended and just had a longer meeting that night?
I think there's a lot to discuss with the workshop, I think it's going to be...
You're going to want to have, too, that would be my recommendation, I can, it's too long. I like your thinking, though. Well, maybe we need to stick with February thirteenth, and I'll watch it when I get back.
I would entertain the twenty-second, that looks like a good day for me, if, if it works for my...
Thursday the twenty-second, we have CCUA.
Oh, Thursday, yeah.
That's at four-thirty, though.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a four-thirty.
Yeah, it's true.
And it's here, so two of them would be here. You won't get super...
I bet we talk, somebody will bring us something.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the twenty-second.
I am, too.
Okay.
Is Thursday twenty-second work for everybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to add on the workshop, that the policy for the Bel Air seniors to change their monies. I need to explain it.
And what, what do you mean, the policy for their...
Well, evidently, last year in the budget, we put four thousand over for the senior club, and they only got twenty-five hundred, wasn't it? And the reason is, there is a policy that states the amount of money they get, and we have to change that policy, so that they get the rest of the money. So we need to discuss it at the workshop. You remember that?
Remember, yeah, we, it made more available, I don't think they requested it, or even
No.
asked for any of it, but yeah, to have it just in case.
They were watching the workshop, and a couple of them called, and they didn't get it, and I called Mr. Lacher on it.
Okay, well, you can do that as well. So we'll have the senior club policy on distribution of funds. I'll also talk about engineering, and, what's the other thing that I said?
Master plan.
The master plan.
What are the, I guess, high-level specifics for the engineering discussion?
Just wanted to kind of give you an update on the, the progress. We'd like to, this year, select an, an engineer, so just like to visit with you about what we're thinking on a process to do that, and a timeline, so, yeah, because we'll have to put out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and things like that, so it's a little bit of a process, and then you'll ultimately make a decision, but we'll, that's basically it, just kind of talk about what we're thinking as a process and a timeline, to make sure that you're comfortable with that.
And this is with regards to the Woodlong?
Yes, the Woodlong project.
I know one item I'd like to discuss is looking at minor road repairs, and going through Ann's list of streets, and discussing how we want to prioritize, and I'd like to discuss both budget, and then, you know, set up some prioritization metrics, that kind of thing.
Okay. Any other something we have available? Absolutely, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Look at all that, and certainly do that in a public meeting, I like that idea. So I don't know if there's any other things that you, you would have, Mr. City Manager, do we need to look at any of our city contracts?
No, we'll, I'll include...
And we talked about IT at one point.
Yeah, we're not ready for that. I'll, I'll include our workshop policy, just so that you can see it, and if there's something you'd like to, to make an adjustment on, kind of how we've set up our workshops.
I was going to ask if we could add something later, if something comes up in the next week, or, you know, except even after the next meeting, so I mean, we're...
I say, well, and we'll actually have a city council meeting before our...
Right, right, yeah.
Because I know one thing that's in all the committee bylaws, is they need to go through the bylaws and make sure that they still approve them, and then sign off on them, too, so I think that's, we probably need to get with the committees on that.
Is this at six-thirty?
Six-thirty. Unless you guys want to move it up to six, or...
Will you be our CCUA, then?
We'll be done by five-thirty-ish.
I'd be good, six.
We'll do six o'clock on Thursday?
That'd be good.
Definitely, something. All right. Well, yeah. Look at that, six o'clock right at, or, yeah. The twenty-second, okay. And I have no need for an executive session, does anybody else? No, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Mayor? Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sign, we are adjourned at straight up to four o'clock.